To the Board of School Directors for the Northern York County School District, June 23, 2020, meeting on June 23 for the board meeting. I'll turn things over to Mr. Seacrest.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beals. Maureen, we're going to start off with our roll call.
Mr. Barnett?
Here.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Here.
Mr. Hulaki?
Here.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Here.
Mrs. Markle?
Here.
Dr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Seacrest?
Here. Okay, I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Again, all voting tonight will be done by roll call, and I would ask those making motions in seconds to please identify yourself first. I would accept a motion for approval of the minutes of the main 2020 school board meeting.
This is Ann, so moved.
This is Greg, second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussions? Okay, we'll take our vote.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And it's approved.
All right, I would approve a motion for approval of tonight's agenda as presented.
Make the motion to approve the agenda, this is Jamie.
This is Ann, I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Agenda approved.
Thank you. All right, this is a section where we do recognition of the public. We would ask you to please give your name and address for the record. Citizens' comments or questions are welcome with a limit of five minutes per presenter. Questions and comments concerning individual staff members, students, and your own children's problems will not be addressed at a public meeting. Your comments will be given consideration by the board, however, the board may choose to not provide a response on your issues this evening. So, anyone have anything they'd like to say?
So, Mr. Seacrest checking the comments. We don't have any. There's also nothing that's been submitted to the board email address, but if any community member has any comments, just please unmute your microphone at this time, and the board will listen to your comment or question. Not seeing any at this time, Mr. Seacrest.
All right, we will move on. Next is our reports section, our acting superintendent, Mr. Beals.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, want to say there's a few more hats to wear in this seat. Certainly, thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I did, in my last board update on Friday, share the task force work that was done at our admin retreat last week. Really, the first time that we had gotten together, the entire leadership team focusing around learning, transportation, food service, athletics, excuse me, extracurricular, and facilities. Perfect timing. Really focused around athletic and activities and trying to prepare the plan that you see before you this evening. Also looking at our reopening of schools in 2021 and the different things that we need to do to remain compliant with state and federal guidelines. We do anticipate that those preliminary guidances will be changing here over the next few weeks. So, as we're planning, we're also planning for multiple outcomes. So, thanks for your patience on that. I know a lot of plans were sent to the board very late in our process as we prepare for this board meeting this evening. Several things were talked about, but not really giving you the opportunity to fully vet those, like the TSI plan for the high school, for the high school's improvement plan. We do have the calendar. We have an alternate calendar for the 2021. Just for those board, community members that weren't part of our previous meetings, that calendar will be an alternate calendar. We'll be surveying our families over the next week, asking for their feedback on those dates. We'll also have a decision to make as we approach the fall, and there's a little bit more clarity around the health circumstances that we're in, and any guidance we may receive from the state as we approach that start date. Right now, our start date for school remains August 26 for students, but there's the potential that we may back that up till September 8, the day after Labor Day. And we'll be making that decision at the end of July. We'll be bringing that to the board with a final admin recommendation at the July board meeting. At that same meeting, we'll be developing our final, you'll be approving a final health and safety plan that will really lead us into the reopening of schools. We have kind of a bridge version for athletics and activities, primarily focused on athletics between now and August 10. I just want to really be clear on that, that that plan really runs up through the official start of fall sports, which is August 10. What it's really governing right now is our facility usage for summer workouts, weight room workouts, and those practices that take place during the summer months on our property. We'll be giving you a more robust plan as we get into July, focusing more so on where the fall sports season may go, as well as where activities such as band camp and competitions, gameplay, where that may lead us. We still have a lot of questions on participants, travel, full contest, or is it a full 16-game season, or is the mid pen going to be modifying that? So, there's just a lot of unknowns with that. So, we opted to do an athletics and activities plan that would take us through middle of August, and you'll be seeing an updated and further guidance, looking into the fall months more specifically. So, that'll be coming. I did want to share one good piece of news that we were notified of in the past week. The district was recognized as a Gold Star Award recipient from the Data Quality Network from PDE. Essentially, what that looks like is annually, the various data points that we need to provide to the state for compliance and things that are required, simply just looking at all of the information that we have to provide to the state on a variety of student, staff, billings, facility, financials, those sorts of things, special education. And we were one of 53 LEAs, local education agencies, which include school districts, CTCs, charter schools, cyber charter schools, and other facilities that are required by the state to provide this data. A little bit, right around 1,000 total entities, and only 52 in the state and us were recognized for actually handing stuff in on time and doing it with accuracy. That really goes to the work of Jen Bechtel, our PIMS administrator, child accounting with Brenda Hartman, Ursula Nichols, who does special education. I just really want to thank Jen Castle, who's really the entry point, because data coming in, if it's quality, then going out to the state, we can ensure that it's quality. So, lots of hands involved in that. It's certainly a team effort, but a nice recognition to receive. Unfortunately, Mr. Labuda today asked me if anything came with that gold award. It is not real gold, but we'll take it anyways. And certainly, just want to say, you know, the past month in serving in this capacity, at times felt like a little bit of whitewater rafting in a six-person raft with our guide kind of shoving us in the water as he went into retirement. But I did feel like Dr. Esbrock prepared us for his retirement. We've been trying to avoid the pitfalls of, you know, going through the rapids and sometimes being disoriented, and certainly look forward to our six-person joining our team here next week with Mr. Kirkpatrick, Vanjie, Dave, Matt, and Jason Young and myself have been trying to keep the raft going in the right direction, and I just want to thank the team that we have here, as well as our principals and other administrators for their work last week. It's been a heavy lifting, looking at the fall and trying to prepare for, you know, eventualities that none of us really know how it will plan out, but just want to ensure you that over the next few weeks, we'll be doing more parent and family communications, we'll be doing more surveys, asking for their input. We do have standing Thursday meetings from now till August 13 that we're going to continue to refine our return-to-school plans. Certainly, you know, Beth, Kevin, those that are on transportation, you know, curriculum committees, I'll let you know what those dates are. If you're able to join us or desire to join us, you are certainly welcome. We have teachers joining us, nurses joining us, and several others as we continue to refine that plan and seek input. So, we will be pushing stuff out onto our district website as those plans start to develop, and like I said, we'll be seeking input from our community. I'm not sure we're going to appease everybody. Actually, I'm pretty certain we won't, but we're certainly trying to keep an eye on the health and safety of our staff and students as we aim and hope to be face-to-face in the fall. That concludes my report, Mr. President, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beals. Appreciate all that you've been doing, pulling double duties here, and just all the administrators through all this turmoil, we'll use that terminology. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Student liaison, have we done any canvassing for our next student liaison as of yet?
No, this is one of the COVID impacts. So, we do reach out to the high school, and part of their election processes, they look at student council, and we'll be having that conversation with Mr. Lehman. But students were not in session at the end of the school year.
Okay.
At least not face-to-face.
Yep, all right. Any inter-municipal reports? Okay, hearing none, CAIU, Mrs. Schaefer?
Mr. President, my meeting is not until next Thursday, this coming Thursday, but I have a few highlights from last. Messiah teachers were, teacher interns at Hilltop Academy were highlighted at the meeting. Supervisor of operations team is working hard to get their buildings prepared and modified, or the staff returning after the shelter in place. And Brian Griffith, the Director of Educational Services, and his team are continuing to work on CARU's online learning program, COLA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. All right, Ms. Eichelberger.
Yes, so we did not have a meeting last night due to lack of participation. I think a lot of people were on vacation, so we are going to meet July.
Okay, all right. Polar Bear Foundation.
Yes, 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 yes. Mr. President, we met last Wednesday after our committee meeting, and a few things, we in the last month or in May, we, two scholarships were awarded, two recipients for the Polar Bear Foundation Scholarship, certificates and award letters were mailed to them. The launch grants, we talked about in our previous board meeting, were mailed to 13 recipients, and there are three upcoming dates. A lot of the fundraising activities had to be shifted this year due to COVID. So, put on your calendar, the clay shoot and luncheon, Saturday, October 31. The luncheon, I believe, is at Ski Round Top, and you don't have to be in the clay shoot to go to the luncheon, but it's kind of for both, too. The gala is now Saturday, February 20 in 2021, and the golf outing is now spring 2021. So, and that is my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. McLean. Business manager report, Mr. Young?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd ask that the following checks be approved for payment, general fund checks dated from May 8, 2020, for check numbers 325904, check 325922, in the amount of $96,153.78. Checks dated from May 11, 2020, to June 10, 2020, for check number 325923, to check 325972, and check 325978, to check 326034, in the amount of $391,311.97. General Fund Board checks dated June 23, 2020, for check number 326035 and 326036, in the amount of $62,637.22. General Fund Payable checks dated May 14, 2020, for check 325924 and 325925, and checks dated May 29, 2020, for check 325973, to check 325977, in the amount of $5,469.51. Capital Reserve Fund checks dated June 10, 2020, for check number 452, to check 454, in the amount of $42,822.60. And food service account checks dated June 23, 2020, for check number 8747, to check 8753, in the amount of $51,683.35.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to pay the bills.
This is Beth, I second that.
Got a motion, a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, I ask for acceptance of the June 2020 Treasuries Report.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to accept the report.
This is Alyssa, second.
Motion to second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And lastly, Mr. President, including the packet of various reports for the board's review.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, moving along, athletics and activities, Mr. Barnett?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move to approve by consent the athletics and activities health and safety plan.
This is Patricia, I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussions?
Yeah, this is Kevin. I have some questions I'd like to ask on that, maybe just some clarification. I think Mr. Beals had done a good job at answering the majority of my questions I had and have a chance to ask these in the committee meeting last week. So, I just had a couple general questions, and maybe Mr. Beals can answer them. If not, we can, I guess, open it up. But first question I had was, is this, are we running this plan by Bob Frankhauser for his input?
Yeah, again, so the input that we have is with everything that we've had with the guidance from PDE. That's the DOH guidelines, that's the CDC guidelines. So, we have been in contact with Dave Walker, who is an associate of Bob's. Bob has not reviewed the plan in its entirety, but we've certainly received guidance both from them and from some other solicitors in the area, Stocking Leader, to name just one.
Okay, thank you. Initially, I had a question on whether, I know this is a guideline right now, and I know it's still developing. My question is, how much of it is going to be mandatory versus a guideline at the end, and how enforceable is it?
Yeah, great question. Don't know. Certainly, right now, the guidelines that we have from the state limits all facilities to 250, requires and is in there listed from the state as all adults must wear face masks. That includes officials, that includes coaches. It is optional for students and student athletes as they participate in the activities. But obviously, when you look at athletics, it's difficult to participate safely with a face mask on. It's difficult to play an instrument with a face mask on. So, then we fall back to the social distancing pieces. As of right now, some of the biggest challenges that we face, as do other districts, is the transportation limitations. So, looking at just, you know, how we can transport based off of the guidance that is currently the guidance received from the CDC, we would be very limited in how many students could participate to away contests, how many, you know, whether or not the marching band would be attending away contests, where we would normally be sending two bands with trucks. Those guidance, that guidance that's currently out there could require as many as five to six buses to transport the band to an away contest, which would be cost prohibitive. So, under the current guidance, yeah, we are following them based off of what we've received from the state. Again, that all came out as preliminary guidance, so the certain assumption is that there'll be additional guidance, and that guidance may be, you know, more or less restrictive depending upon the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, moving on, buildings and grounds, Mr. Rudy?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve by consent the facility use request as listed on the agenda, numbers one through eight.
This is Ann, I second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Hulaki?
Mr. Seacrest, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move by consent to approve Budget and Finance Committee report, items A through K.
This is Alyssa. This is Ann, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a couple seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, quick one, committee report, Dr. McLean?
Yes, I move to approve by consent items A through D.
This is Mr. Hulaki, I second.
This is Ann, I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, Policy Committee report, Mrs. Schaefer? Can you hear us, Pat?
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute my thing. Mr. President, I move to approve by consent policies for tentative approval, numbers one through six.
This is Greg, I second.
No motion, a second, any discussion on the policies? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We just do personnel, I'm sorry.
No.
On personnel now.
Personnel committee report, sorry, Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve by consent the Personnel Committee report, items A through G, and items H and I on the addendum.
This is Greg, I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we have numerous items for board action.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, you want me to start with these?
Go ahead.
All right, here we go. Mr. President, I move to approve the employment agreement between the Northern York County School District and Jason Young, business manager, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025.
This is Ann, I second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the employment agreement between the Northern York County School District and Evangeline Unti, Director of Human Resources, of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025.
This is Pat, I second.
No motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the 2020-2021 food service budget and pricing.
This is Mr. Rudy, I second.
No motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoibert?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer? Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the contract renewal for the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program for the 2020-2021 school year.
This is Pat, I second.
No motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
This is, Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the 2020-2021 Homestead-Farmstead Exclusion Resolution. Farmstead exclusion is $3,617. Homestead exclusion is $7,233.
This is Alyssa Eichelberger, I second.
No motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the 2020-2021 Final Budget and set taxes to be levied as follows. Real estate tax mill rate, 17.4716. Per capita tax imposed under Act 511 is $5. Reenactment of the one and a quarter earned income tax at the collection rate, 0.75%. Reenactment of the 1% Realty Transfer Tax, at a collection rate of half a percent. Reenactment of the amusement tax rate at 10%, shared with municipality. And that these taxes be adopted to finance the 2020-2021 budget, which calls for proposed expenditures in the amount of $50,520,631. Proposed revenues in the amount of $50,152,849.
Mr. Rudy, I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yes, I do have an item of discussion. And I apologize for the motion, and I'll have to ask Mr. Hulaki to revise said motion. That is actually the incorrect millage rate. That's the current millage rate, and it didn't get updated for the budget. It should be 18.0481. 18.0481 is the correct millage rate in the budget. The revenue number and the expenditure number are correct. However, the millage rate listed there is not correct. So I would have to ask that we amend that, that motion, Greg.
So we, I guess we have a motion, and do we have a second already, Ken?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I think we would either need to table this, or vote against it, and then we'll have to put a new motion in.
We can have someone make a motion to amend it.
Okay. All right, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to amend the real estate tax mill rate to 18.0481.
This is Beth, I second that.
We have a motion and a second to the amendment, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes. Okay, we have an amended motion for item F. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I apologize for missing that also. It is correct on page 12 of the budget resolution, but it was just incorrect in the motion.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the 2020-2021 Capital Reserve Project Budget.
This is Mr. Rudy, I second.
This is Anna, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the Education Services Contract with the Vista School for the 2020-2021 Regular School Year for One Student.
This is Mrs. Schaefer, I second the motion.
No motion and a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Seacrest, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the Education Services Contract with the Vista School for the 2020 Extended School Year for One Student.
This is Alyssa Eichelberger, I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the Tuition Agreement with New Story LLC for the 2020-2021 School Year for One Student.
This is Mr. Rudy, I second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the Tuition Agreement with New Story LLC for the 2020-21 School Year for One Student.
This is Mr. Rudy, I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Well, Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the contract for three secondary student slots with River Rock Academy for the 2020-2021 School Year.
This is Mr. Schaefer, I second the motion.
No motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to approve the contract for Elementary Student Services with River Rock Academy for the 2020-2021 School Year.
This is Mr. Rudy, I second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth Agreement with River Rock Academy for the 2020-2021 School Year.
This is Alyssa Eichelberger. This is Anna, I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
This is Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Hulaki, I move to table letter O. That is, paperwork is not ready for that. We do have PNC Bank who is going to be providing us that loan, but we'll have to take that up at a voting meeting in July. So we would, we would need a second to table.
Yes, we would. Do you have a second?
This is Alyssa Eichelberger, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table item O until the July meeting, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Young and I spoke earlier today. We may have to have a voting meeting at the committee meeting, or call a special meeting. Jason, I'm not sure if you have, if you know the timing yet of that.
Yeah, unfortunately, so just to give those in the public that, that may not know what, what this item is, or what we're doing here. Basically, due to a cash flow issue for a bond payment in August, we need to have, basically, it's, it's a letter of credit, that's not what they call it for school districts, but basically, it's needed for, for our cash flow here in the summertime, in order to make a bond payment. And we went out for an RFP to banks, the RFP was out for a month. Those were due back on Friday. Unfortunately, we received zero responses on Friday. I went into panic mode Friday afternoon, and through a lot of discussions with Brad Remig, with PFM, who's our investment and finance advisor, as well as Mike Stromera with Pizlaff, who is basically our bank. They have done a lot of calling around and a lot of work on this. And PNC has basically got, gotten us through the credit process at this point. Everything's a go, but we do not have paperwork from them yet. So there, there still needs to be, they need to come back to us and to me, and let me know what that looks like in terms of an interest rate, in terms of drawdown provisions and payback provisions. And so there's, there's a lot of the paperwork, like the paperwork that still needs to be ironed out. I'm hopeful we can get that done this week, maybe early next week, so we can have that document. So some of that's going to be driven off of what the bank requires of us. The, the RFP was, was stated that we would draw after July 1. Obviously, that, that won't be the case, it's going to be further into July at this point. Whether that's July 15th or July 21st, the committee date, that's discussions that I need to have with, with the bank to see what, you know, what they're willing to, to do for us here. So a lot of the details, unfortunately, I can't give you yet. There, there's a chance we may need a special meeting if, if they push us to that point. I'll be working with Mr. Seacrest and Mr. Beals on, on that. If, if it is needed, I'll do my best to not let that happen. But this is a very important item that, that we have to have taken care of, kind of at the bank's discretion, to be honest. So I will keep you all up to date once I have that paperwork and let you know. The good thing is, you know, we have a bank right now that's, that's working with us to do that. But unfortunately, we just couldn't get it done for, for tonight's meeting, which was the goal. So that's where we're at.
And for those who weren't a part of the discussion, you know, our revenue comes in, in what, September, October? So that's when all our money's coming in.
Right, we, we don't have a lot of revenues coming in in July and August. You know, our, our tax bills are dated July 15. We really don't start seeing revenue coming in until, till mid-August at the, at the earliest, and then the bulk of that revenue really is coming in in September and October. Given the COVID situation, we could see that adversely delaying some of that revenue, obviously, as, as well for tax bills. So unfortunately, it's a, it's a timing issue.
Okay, any other discussions?
I was just curious why, if we had an idea why we didn't get a response.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, great question, Joe. So what I've now been finding out, and PFM has, has been finding out, no banks are fulfilling these requests. Getting a TRAN from a bank right now is extremely difficult. They're, they're not willing to give credit to anybody. They're kind of in a sit-back and we're going to protect what we have mode. I mean, frankly, I can say this, but it, it's a very risk adverse investment for them. I mean, they know we're getting this revenue, they're know, they know we're going to be able to pay this back. So it's not a risky debt or a loan that they're giving us at all. Um, however, they're just in, in shutdown mode when it comes to, to their credit and issuing credit. So, uh, PFM has never, according to Brad, or at least I should say Brad, has not seen this happen before. However, there's other school districts out there right now that are finding this out, just as we are. Unfortunately, the market, um, is awful for this sort of thing. Um, and really, the only way you're getting these is, is through a, a bank to which you have some sort of connection. So, um, even though Pizlaff is holding our funds, we use PNC as our local bank, that's where we would go to deposit funds and things like that. So our connection is through PNC, so we leverage both PFM and Pizlaff to, I won't say put pressure on, on PNC, but as our, um, as our assets to, to, to go towards them and say, hey, we really need some help with this, um, and they've been willing to, to do that for us. So unfortunately, Joe, i- it's the market, it really hasn't been seen before. Um, and it certainly makes us think twice as to what we need to do moving forward, because the plan was to do one of these probably for the next three years for cash flow, and we, I don't wanna be in this situation again next year. So we're gonna, I'll be revisiting this with PFM, and we're gonna come up with a different plan so that, so that hopefully this does not happen again.
Okay.
Hey Jason, this is Greg, I mean, unfortunately, it's not like we can have a larger fund balance, because, I mean, we're limited to the amount of money that you can have in a general fund. So at some point, I mean, you, you can't earmark money for, is there a way to have additional money in a fund balance and still, still be underneath the 8% threshold?
Well, there is if, if we were to commit fund balance. So a- as I think we've seen before, as we've gone through rating calls and things like that, the banks and the lenders want to see a large fund balance. They want to see increased revenues, just like in a business. They wanna see that you have savings and that you have cash. That's who they'll lend to. Um, however, the, under state guidelines, we're only allowed to have so much fund balance. So they really conflict with each other, you know, unless, unless you're gonna commit fund balance and have large reserves set aside for certain things, which really isn't for cash flow. I- it's for those certain things that you're setting money aside, a building project, or whatever it may be. So really, the, you know, the financing side of the world and kind of the local government, what we have to deal with, with the state government and, and our, um, uh, restrictions around fund balance really are at, at odds with each other. They, they do not correlate. And we see that, you know, obviously through our credit rating, that we just went through less than a year ago, with our fund balance coming down and our cash coming down, that negatively affected us. Now, are we within the state guidelines now? Yes, we are. Um, but the credit rating agencies and the, and the banks don't wanna see that. They don't want to see you using your fund balance. So unfortunately, it's a world of, um, that, that conflicts with each other. Um, and, and there's not a really good answer to that, other than the, the schools that do have large commitments for certain things, you know, they would have those funds, uh, but that's really the only way around it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
Have you seen any preliminary numbers as far as what might cost us, Jason?
I, I have not, I, I haven't gotten any interest rates, I haven't seen anything. Um, you know, I, I hate to be too positive, because until it's on paper and it's actually signed, it's not a done deal yet. Um, so it's all verbal at this point. Um, I'm just glad we have a partner that's willing to dance with us right now.
Yeah.
So.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
This is Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Hlaake.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoebert.
Yes.
Mrs. Markle.